Good evening, I'd like to welcome everyone to the planning board meeting for the Town of Newbury. Today is the 6th of March 2019. My name is Pete Pickos. I will be the acting chair. However, we do have our chairperson, Rachel McMinister, who will be participating remotely in tonight's meeting due to geographic distant restrictions. This is in accordance with 940 CMR 29.10. All votes tonight will be roll call votes. And just as a point of information and an announcement, since our last meeting, the Board of Selectmen have appointed Kristin Grubbs as a full voting member of our board. Congratulations, Kristin.
Congratulations.
Yes, and Martha Leahy is our current associate member who's also unable to be with us today. And I'd like the board members to introduce themselves. George Morris.
Larry Murphy.
Kristin Grubbs, Martha Taylor, Town Planner.
All right, Pete Pickos, Dana, and Madam Chairperson.
Is this on a microphone?
Yes, go right ahead. Speak. Hello? Can you hear us, Rachel?
I can see you. Can you hear me?
We can't hear you. Welcome.
Oh, good. Okay, thank you.
You're loud and clear.
All right. So our agenda this evening, do we have minutes to review?
We do not.
Okay. So we will go right into our February 2019 financial report. And our financial report indicates that we have payrolls and invoices that we're signing. Payroll warrants for the Town Planner for PR 19 through 16, pay periods ending 2/2, as well as PR 19-17 for pay periods ending 2/16. Expense invoices include first staples off supplies of 21 February 19, the American Planning Association membership for Town Planner of February 2nd, 2019, and a Verizon Wireless Planning iPad monthly charge, which was concluded on the 26th of February as well. Anything additional to the financial report?
No, that's it.
Okay. So what we're going to do is go into our old business. Our agenda this evening is pretty light, so that is going to be timely. And we're going to talk about a proposed zoning amendments for the April 2019 Town Meeting. Do you want to start this, Martha?
Sure. Actually, most of your packet is devoted to this. It's what I emailed out yesterday. So it includes the draft PowerPoint that I put together. There are probably several holes in it, but it's a first stab anyway. Then the public hearing announcement, which was, first publication was in the paper yesterday. Second one will be in next week for the March 20th public hearing. And then the letter that went to the Selectmen explaining what the proposal, proposed amendments are, and giving a little background on why they're being proposed, and then the text of the amendments. The table of use regulations, for some reason, did not print in color, so those changes might be difficult to read, but they're pretty much, all of this is pretty much what you've seen already. It's just started to format it in the Town Meeting warrant format. I have not yet received comments back from Town Council on any of these, so I have nothing to pass on yet from her. I did resend it, and will do my best to get comments before our public hearing on the 20th. The board will need to vote on other revisions to these proposed zoning amendments the night of the public hearing, so that I can get them incorporated into the warrant. Yes, the Selectmen are going to be reviewing the warrant on March 26th, and will be signing it on April 2nd. So our timeframe is unfortunately pretty tight on this due to the fact that they actually canceled their February 12th meeting, set us back a little bit.
Just to make sure I understand, so you're saying any revisions we can make at the public hearing prior to the Town Meeting?
Yes, yeah. So that's really what the public hearing is about, to, you know, to get comments from the public, any final comments from the board. We can incorporate those into the proposed language, and then that will be finalized.
Okay, cool.
That'll be at our next meeting.
That'll be at our next meeting, yes.
Yeah.
Yep. So I don't know if you want me to go through the draft PowerPoint, or Larry and I talked about the marijuana portion of it the other day. And I don't know how you want to do this. Go ahead.
Okay, just, yeah, Martha and I have, as she said, have been working together on some of the languages, you know, that you saw the last time. And we also met the other day to talk about how we might present this at the public hearing. I'm happy to do the presentation, of course, if the chair is comfortable with that. And Martha, I just put together some bullet points, you know, talking points for myself, which Martha has been kind enough to edit and give me some good suggestions on. Basically, what I'd want to do is just give a brief history of how we got to where we are, remembering also that in the Fall Town Meeting in 2017, there was an article on there for marijuana bylaw moratorium, which had been proposed by the planning board. The Town Meeting rejected that, and so I wasn't on the board at the time, of course, but I think there was some scrambling that had happened to get something in place for this Spring Town Meeting. As you all know, it's a many months process to get a zoning bylaw change drafted, hold your public hearings, of course, as preceded by referral to the Selectmen, et cetera. So what most community, I think probably every community did, and I'm getting a little bit ahead of myself in the story, but the CCC, or Cannabis Control Commission, was established in order to facilitate the implementation of the new law to regulate marijuana establishments. And they were deliberate in their rollout. They did finally get their regulations promulgated in March, I think, of 2018. But the point is that we had to act. If a community, because of the length of time it takes in order to have a bylaw approved, every community did something in place. And again, the recommendation from this board, at the time, was for a moratorium. The vote is preferred something different, so the current bylaw was put in place. And once the regulations were, CCC regulations were promulgated, then we had to take another look at that bylaw. And what we found was that it really was more restrictive than it was intended to be, I think. And certainly, independent of the CCC regulations, it raises some issues as to whether or not it would pass legal muster, because there's no practical place in town in which marijuana establishment can be located, quite frankly.
And I did, just to interject here, I did put together some maps, which were a separate packet here. The first one shows currently in place is a thousand-foot buffer zone from daycares and schools. So that shows, that shows that on the first map. The second one shows, and this is really the more restrictive one, the 300-foot buffer zone for residential uses in the Business and Light Industrial District. So if you take a look at this, almost every parcel that has frontage on a road is ruled out just because of the residential use.
And I think many of the remaining parcels are under conservation restrictions or agricultural restrictions and the like, if I'm not mistaken, Martha.
Right, that's right, yeah. So that makes them impractical, even if they could be used under zoning. It makes them impractical for use.
So the other thing I would want to point out at the public hearing is, you know, just the changes that we're proposing, the changes that went, have been discussed by this board. We took the language regarding the buffer zones for schools pre-K through 12 right out of the CCC regulations, and that's 500 feet property line to property line. We have also included daycare centers, which is not in the CCC regulations. It doesn't appear that we're prohibited from including daycare centers. But the regulations, quite frankly, are not as precise as one might like. There's a lot of questions, I think, that are left open. The other thing we have done, and again, this has been a discussion before the board in past meetings, we've incorporated a provision of a 150-foot buffer zone, structure to structure for residential buffers. And as was pointed out, half a football field. And we've also incorporated some language from the medical marijuana bylaw that permits the planning board to reduce the buffer zone, either buffer zone by up to 25% upon a showing of that it's not practical for the facility to be located anywhere else in town, and upon a showing that, or that there's a significant physical barrier between the proposed marijuana establishment and the protected use, such as state highway, you know, significant wetlands, streams, that type of thing. And then they would, the applicant would also, you know, have to show the board that they had adequate safety provisions in place, you know, to prevent minors getting ahold of the stuff. So I mean, those are the high points that I'd propose to make at the meeting with the use of the PowerPoint presentation.
Those were all very positive.
I'm sorry?
They were all very positive.
Yeah, I think so. And I think, well, you know, obviously, we're trying to, you know, find a workable solution here, you know, to what's, you know, difficult, a sensitive topic, you know?
Just to add, the other two maps in here, and I have not done these before, was for the Commercial Highway District.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Martha. I forgot to mention that, yeah.
So the fourth one in the packet is the 300-foot buffer zone, as it is now, property line to property line. It basically rules out everything, so even though under a zoning, it's allowed here by special permit, practically it is not. And same with the stop and rolling because of all the residences across the street from the Commercial Highway District there. You know, in reality, we've got the State Police Barracks, and we've got the State DPW there, and Salter. So unless the parcels were subdivided, it's, you know, it's probably unlikely. But as we discussed, both of these locations are right next to the interchange of 95, so from that point of view, there would be...
I forgot to mention that. We're also including, for all marijuana establishments, they can be located in the CH, Commercial Highway, Commercial Highway A District.
Right. And we've also added, yeah, Commercial Highway N, Commercial Highway A, which is this district here. So on page three of the PowerPoint, it's the bottom slide that shows those changes in terms of districts where we would allow them. So for the PowerPoint, basically what I did was just gave a very brief history of marijuana establishments, how we kind of got to where we are, the types of marijuana establishments that have covered, been on by law, then current allowed locations, proposed allowed locations. But I include a zone map of the whole town. I can insert these maps if you all think that it would be helpful to do so.
I think so.
Could we do it in a, like a before, this is the way it is now, and this is what the change would be in format, of those maps inserted into the PowerPoint?
Yeah, we can do that. I can't, Larry and I talked about trying to do it for the residential, and showing to structure to structure is going to be very...
Yeah, yeah.
...difficult. But the property line to property line ones are certainly easy enough to do.
Okay.
So I guess, Larry, the question for you, Ben, is maybe we can work together to kind of work the maps in...
Absolutely.
...into this, and then if all of this, through page six, basically covers what you wanted to cover.
Yeah, I mean, I am flexible in the order that we cover the various topics. I just wanted to try to be as comprehensive as we can.
Yeah, no, I think it's good to explain, you know, where we are, how we got here, what we're trying to do. I think that's a very good, good way to go forward.
And Rachel, are you comfortable with Larry doing that part of the presentation?
Oh, yeah, of course.
Perfect. Okay, anything else on the marijuana and the PowerPoint? Okay, so Rachel, we're going to move into the wireless component of the PowerPoint.
Okay.
Were you able to open this in the email?
Yeah. Just scrolling through at the moment. All right, here I am. Yes, I'm there now.
Let me see if Martha wants to drive this for a few minutes first.
Okay.
I can, if you want. Basically, there are just a couple slides here. One is to provide a little bit of background, which was that the current bylaw was adopted in 2001, where we allow it, which is Business and Light Industrial District, in the purpose of the proposed amendments. And then the second slide is to, basically, second and third slides are to cover what those proposed amendments are. So allowing the building commissioner to approve modifications of eligible facilities if they help substantially change the physical dimensions of the facility, change the setback from certain pre-existing uses from 900 feet to 300 feet, change the setback on the property to, and I kept this in there, to 1.5 times the vertical height of the tower, where you can change that at the public hearing.
Okay. Can we go back to the change to the setbacks of the wireless facilities from 900 to 300?
Yes.
Certain pre-existing uses?
Right. I didn't list all of those, and I can, if you want to. It's like nursing homes, residences, schools. So if you think it would be helpful to list them, I can do that.
Yeah, I think we may have to put something in parentheses, because it's, I don't think, I don't think that'll be clear as to what we're talking about.
Okay. So I'll take those out of the bylaw. And add those.
Yeah, and as you said, right, we can change the one and a half back to one...
Yes.
For the vertical height.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll do that at the hearing.
Yeah, fine.
And then changing the required distance for butter notification from 900 feet to 300 feet. And then making that correction in the description of the district that it's allowed in, industrial and commercial to business and light industrial, to reflect the changes in the map.
Yep.
So that was it for that one. Do you think there's anything else we need to say?
I have just one draft and chip point, drafting point. Section C2 use written restrictions. Wireless communications facility may be erected by special permit in the, then industrial, et cetera, is stricken. Shouldn't the "in the" be stricken as well?
Are you in the text of the thing itself?
So I didn't catch all that, Larry?
Section C2, under use restrictions, it reads, "A wireless," to A, "A wireless communications facility may be erected by special permit 'in the.'" Then if you take out the language that's being stricken, it reads "in the" "by the zoning board of appeals pursuant to..."
No, it's...
Oh, yes.
It should say "by special permit in the Business and Light Industrial District."
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood. Okay, okay. I'm sorry. You're correct.
Okay.
You're correct. I read that as all being stricken, but, okay.
Anything else?
No, as long as we don't have to go any further into the upcoming changes of...
Yeah, I don't think...
Because God knows what that's going to be at this point.
Yeah, I know. You know, the 5G stuff and the changes that actually need to be in place by April 15th regarding aesthetics and things like that. I mean, there's just no way that we can address any of that stuff at this point, so...
I haven't had a chance to look at whatever the state has passed with respect to that, but quickly looking at the federal, it doesn't look like that's in place yet. It looks like it's, they're proposing certain restrictions, but they haven't, they've been challenged in court.
Right.
So it looks like they're trying to direct policy more than modified regulations at this point.
Right. I think, I would assume as long as the challenge is in place, that nothing can really move forward anyway.
Right, right. But I'd like to, which I'll do next week when I'm back, look into what the state has proposed or has asked for, promulgated for regulations in that area for this, what they call it, light, I forget the terms they used, but it was still the light, something technology, a small cell technology, that's what they call it.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. To see what the state is thinking in those lines, along those lines.
Okay. And if it's, you know, if it's appropriate, maybe at the Town Meeting, I mean, we can talk, I guess, at the public hearing of how we want to address all of these things at the Town Meeting, if we want to do the same format of Larry doing the presentation on marijuana and you doing the wireless. The chair does need to make an oral or written report. If Town Meeting is less than 21 days after the public hearing, I think we'll be okay with that, but we should talk that format. But I mean, how many, it'd be worth mentioning some of the small cell technology stuff and to say that there, we know that there are changes that are coming down the pipe that will be addressed in the future, just in case, you know, to kind of head off any questions about that.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Just a very general statement, not getting into any detail.
Right, right, exactly.
Excellent. Okay, so then moving along from wireless into the events that you want to kind of mention more briefly.
Yeah, so the next one is, I've got just one slide for the special permit granting authority change to just note that we're adding the planning board and zoning board of appeals as special permit granting authorities in the Agricultural Residential District as designated in the table of use regulations. And I'll just note that this is really a housekeeping item at the public hearing, so I can address that if you all want me to do that. And I could be a little more specific if you want to add some language, but I just thought we could be pretty general about it. I will let you know, I got one email question about this this morning. One person who saw it thought that it was actually intended to change, actually make some changes to the Residential Agricultural District itself, specifically with regard to the barking property at the corner of High Road and Cottage Road. So I did email her back and clarify, so I think she's all set, but we may be getting similar questions. It's a little confusing, so we just need to make sure that everybody realizes it's just a housekeeping.
So you could mention that on the slide. Is it going to be sitting up there at the meeting? This slide, as you describe it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you could somehow make a notation of that, that it's, this is a clerical housekeeping correction, like you're not changing something's...
It's almost... Follow up saying, this is actually just a housekeeping, right, or as Kristin just said, a clerical correction?
Right, right. I thought I would do that verbally, not actually on the slide, but just as a discussion, unless you think it should be...
Are you thinking visually, just so people can see it?
I just think if you read this and you're not listening, it kind of sounds like a change, that we're adding a new authority to be a...
Would it be better to say a clarification?
And it's not really a clarification, it's more correcting a discrepancy, because the table of use regulations has, you know, has that language, designates all free boards as SPGAs, but the written language always says it. So I could say to correct a discrepancy, if that would be...
Or just as, as has already been designated in the current table of use regulations, or something that identifies it's just making them a line and not...
Yeah, yeah.
That's significant, too. I mean, hopefully, people are listening.
Second, taking information, isn't it?
Of course.
Yeah, but I know some people are readers and some are listeners.
Anything else? Oh, the existing dwellings?
Right. Yeah, again, just, I can note, I didn't note it here, but I can verbally note that this is something that was requested by the building commissioner, unless you all think it would be helpful to have that in the slide.
It might diffuse the discussion.
Yeah, I think on all of these, maybe a little, a little parenth explaining why this came up and what we're trying to do, you know? So in this case, you know, it was a request by the building commissioner, and however, we can say that without making it sound like we're getting him in trouble.
Right, yeah. Not trying to throw him under the bus.
Right, exactly. And back on, even though on the wireless, you know, just saying we're trying to get ourselves in compliance with, you know, previously passed federal regulations.
Right.
So they realized this wasn't just some bright idea we got up with one day. You know, there were actually bona fides reasons that we're doing this. I think that would help, even on the PowerPoint.
Okay. I wondered, do you think it would be helpful at the public hearing, maybe to hand out the letter that was given to the Selectmen, which provides some of that information, if anybody wants it?
Could certainly make copies available and put them by the door or something, you know?
And make it available, can we make it available on the website beforehand?
Yeah, we could.
Okay. How do we, at least people have access to it beforehand?
Yeah.
Or most, at all.
Yeah, both, yep. Good. All right.
And then I just have a slide for questions and answers and comments.
Oh, you know there won't be any.
It depends.
We will have explained it somewhere.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. As an aside, on the marijuana, I guess this is part of my Town Planner's report, I did get a phone call today from a local contractor who is associated with the grow facility in Salisbury, who's interested in putting, I think, either a manufacturing or dispensary in town. So he's going to come in and talk to me next week. I explained to him that we are actually going through the process of changing the zoning right now. So I encouraged him to come to the public hearing on the 20th.
Okay, good. Well, Martha, thank you for putting together the PowerPoint and the input from everyone on the board for that. And I think that's going to be a useful tool for the meeting.
Yeah, so I guess if you have a chance to look through it some more, and you have any other thoughts, comments, whatever, please just let me know, and then I'll try to revise, revise the PowerPoint, and I can send out a revised draft before the hearing. And maybe if you and I could just get together, because I think that's the biggest need of this whole...
Yeah, I know you're going someplace warm, I think, actually.
For a couple days, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Briefly.
Very briefly.
Yeah, get together next week, or...
Yeah, I'll be back on Tuesday.
Yeah, it's supposed to warm up by Friday.
So is the snow going to be gone by the time we get back?
I don't know.
Well, I don't know. I was talking about down here, not up there. We got a couple, we got a couple days of cold weather down here, but then it's supposed to get back to warm and hobo on Friday.
Yeah.
So...
Let's see, any new business? I really don't have any new business. Rachel, do you have any new business?
The only thing I'd like to bring up again is how, if we can just try to get some, some way to get information available to the public on our town site somehow, upcoming meetings and information that's been submitted, plans, et cetera, for different projects, so that, you know, people who are interested enough to show up to meetings could at least have something in front of them before showing up and being all cranky about things they don't know yet. So I'm just, I guess I'd like to just figure out a system for posting, you know, not drafts necessarily, but for our major public hearing projects, for, you know, the latest submissions and plans should be available to the public.
Yeah, maybe that's something that I can work with Emily to, you know, see if she could do that on a regular basis as we get things in.
All right. It has to get some system so people know what they're, you know, that they're looking at the latest, because inevitably, there's going to be different versions of information put on site, so I'll come up with a system.
Right.
But even, you know, even things like this, once we get, you know, that's a final version of the PowerPoint, we could even put that on the, you know, make that available prior to the meetings, and let people know what's coming up.
Right, right. Yeah, maybe...
I don't know, I may regret that afterwards. But it seems like a good idea at the moment.
Well, make sure your cell phone number is attached. Well, make sure your cell phone number is attached to that, Rachel.
So, I don't know, I'm just thinking, more information is better at this point.
It is, it is, and it diffuses any confusion, helps too.
I mean, people still need to take the responsibility of going and taking a look at it, but, you know, maybe there could be an ongoing projects or current projects or something like that. You know, set up a new tab on the website that would address those things.
Is there any metric in town about how many people use that website and look at it?
You know, I think Susan probably has that.
I'd like to see if it's growing, if nothing else.
No, I think it is, but I don't, I don't really know.
I think it, I think it would increase if people knew on a regular basis that they could find what, you know, they were looking for.
Yeah, I don't know how that gets known.
And I just mean specifically, I mean specifically to us, I'm not talking about other sites, but, you know, if they, if, you know, we know we have a OSRD coming up since it's already been announced, and they can go and look at the plans, you know, and not just have to wait to show up at a public meeting. I think it would be a big help.
We do know that people look at agendas online.
Yes, yes.
Right.
Might be good to put something on the agenda form that says the material, additional material is available on the town website.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, that would be very good.
Yeah.
And create the tab if possible.
Yeah.
Are applicants required to submit plans digitally?
They're supposed to, sometimes it's a little pulling teeth, but yeah, they're, they're supposed to do that.
Because that would, I, I wouldn't, I think it's a great idea to have them on websites, I think it can be an administrative task for whoever's posting it, if you have to scan everything yourself, so I would certainly encourage to make sure the applicants provide them, you know, so then you can just stick with PDA up there.
Yeah, and some of them, some of the files are huge, so they come through in Dropbox or something, but...
Right, it's a little tricky.
Okay, um, oh, this is, I don't know, newer, but the upcoming CPTC meeting on the 16th?
Yes.
We're gonna have a number of people going?
Um, I think three of us are at least.
Rachel?
I'm going, yes.
Kristen's going?
Don't ask, don't ask me what I signed up for.
I'm going, yeah.
And I'll be going?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? So that'll be two weeks.
That'll be 16.
All right, town planners report.
Okay, um, I kind of just did that. The only other thing of note, and this just came up today, there were two inquiries today, one to Jen, the admin and inspectional services, and one to maybe an email from a company in New Hampshire who seems to be interested in pursuing the Byfield Estates property at the end of Pearson Drive. So the inquiry I got was, wanted to know whether there were any subdivision approvals, so I just wrote back and said that it was a 40B comprehensive permit and that, you know, Mass Housing had pulled the project eligibility letter, so there's nothing, nothing in place right now, so I'm not quite sure exactly what this is all about, but Jen got a similar inquiry.
Now, this is property at the far end of Pearson?
At the far end of Pearson, yeah, yeah.
The size of that is 16?
Uh, oh god.
24. 24 homes?
It was 24 homes.
24, yeah, it was something.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't that big, no.
I don't remember the size.
Yeah, it was like 26, 27 acres, but I could be totally wrong about that. So I was just about to have Emily file that away, and I think we're gonna have to keep it out, just in case.
But the previous submission wouldn't have any, could a new interested party somehow take all the engineering that was done?
They could buy it, they could buy all of that work.
So it's the ownership of the previous developer applicant?
Right, right, so, you know, presumably if they were gonna buy the property, they might buy all of the work that had ever been done. You know, unless they have their own thoughts on what to do, but they, they have to start from scratch, they have to start with a site plan approval, which is the first step, the town gets to respond to it, there's a site walk and all of that. ZBA is out of that process altogether, and then if they get their eligibility letter from Mass Housing or another subsidizing agency, then they would submit the comprehensive permit to zoning board of appeals, so...
And the inquiries were specifically about 40Bs, or there wasn't necessarily mention of that?
It was, it was about that property, and the email that came to me was just about whether there was any subdivision approval. And I think the conversation that was held with Jen did kind of get into the, Jen mentioned that it had been a 40B and that the eligibility letter had been pulled, and they seemed to be aware of that, so I'm not quite sure why I got the email that I did, which came in after the discussion with Jen.
Is the property on the market?
Wasn't aware of it being on the market. The previous developer actually bought the property, but he would not be allowed to do anything with it as a 40B.
All right, the inquiries continue. VAs and reports. What does it matter?
That would be me, yes. Let's see, I'm just completely drawing the blank on what happened at the last elections meeting, other than your appointments. They were, they were going to be discussing the, the Evergreen project, that was continued to March 26th because Greenie R. had not submitted the written response to Joseph Walker's comments.
Was the board due to talk about the legal issue of accepting the gift versus...
That was not on the agenda, and I don't know at what point that will be discussed.
Because I thought that was, that was bumped to a certain date, but no.
I think originally it was gonna be...
The date of a snowstorm or something, wasn't it?
Yeah, I think so, anyway, I don't know, I don't know that it's been rescheduled.
I'd be interested to know if the board intends to figure that question out before considering
It would be helpful.
Stormwater, you know, Joe's comments, seeing like, that big question should be discussed. I'll write a letter to the board.
I'm afraid I've been AOL on that.
It's okay.
And I'm now going to look to George for a zoning vote of appeal.
Yes, there is one. This goes back to a meeting on January 31st. There's seven, seven items on the agenda, you only have to hear about two. The first one was Richard White Jr., which requesting a variance to allow the continued use of a detached accessory apartment. Has a garage and one-bedroom unit apartment on the top of block property located at 10 Annapolis Way West, Plumada. After some discussion, some quite a bit of discussion, Eric's sponsor, sponsor, apartments not allowed on Plumada. Said that twice, they went to conference and the board denied it. Said that, and that was over.
Wait, that was a variance, wasn't it?
Oh, it said variance here, yes. So that was a denial, and the other one was Richard and Susan Savatelli, requesting the increase of the height of structure on the lot, which also exceeded block coverage and FAR requirements of Plumada on Overlake District, a property located at 952nd Street, Plumada. And that discussion, the board voted to allow it. Where is that? I don't know, let's read it. That's it, everything else was continued.
Actually, I have a little bit on zoning, I had a conversation with Eric Spahn this afternoon. The Susan had sent our proposed zoning amendments to the ZBA to see if they had any comments or anything, or if they wanted me or any of the board members to come before them to explain what's going on. You know, Eric's assessment was that it really doesn't have any impact on the work that they're doing, so he's gonna present the proposed zoning amendments to them. But one of the things we did talk about is getting together, the two boards getting together as we've done in the past, probably after town meeting, to just kind of have a general conversation about issues that may be coming up in terms of, of the decisions that they need to make resulting from, you know, lack of clarity in the zoning and things like that, so we'll probably discuss that further and then try to find dates that work for, for everybody. Now, there's some, the PRD is one that keeps coming up because of, you know, that was drafted back in, what, 2002, 2001? The two communities, Newbury and Newburyport, have interpreted certain provisions differently, but there's some that are a little ambiguous, which kind of keep catching the ZBA up, so I think those are some of the things that Eric would like to talk about.
Sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, I think it's, it's helpful to actually get together with them from time to time. The last hot button really was the accessory apartment bylaw, because they were having real trouble with some of the provisions in that. And I think we've got it ironed out for the most part, but there, you know, there, it still seems like some people come in and they're trying to kind of push the, push the envelope a little bit beyond what the intention of the board was, so it might be good to have a discussion about that one specifically again.
All right, good. All right, MVPC.
MVPC, since our last meeting, I've been to two MVPC meetings, one of which Kristen came to, which was our planners' meeting last week. Seems like it was a week ago.
I know, it is, it's just a week ago.
But that was, that was a good meeting, we, Chris Klatchman from DHCD was there, and she talked about the housing choice initiative. There are, there are grant programs, certain communities can become designated housing choice communities, we really don't fall into that category, but there is another category for communities that have 7,000 people or less, or fewer, which we might be able to, you know, get some grant funding for, but we'd have to kind of look into what some of the options would be. We had thought that there was gonna be a discussion of the nuts and bolts of natural resource protection zoning, and it turned out not to be that. It was a woman from the Mass Office of Public Collaboration, and I guess they have been tasked by Governor Baker to lead, I guess, kind of call it a visioning session in a way, or something to help communities develop natural resource protection zoning. They've used it for helping communities develop their open space plans, and I guess the thought is that for situations where something might be a little bit controversial, it helps kind of synthesize and, and bring up, you know, kind of the most salient points. I don't know, you might...
Yeah, I think it was interesting, it's sort of this, they're, by applying to the grant program, you're bringing sort of facilitation services from the state office to your community to work with you for a year and gathering different stakeholders and having a, a public dialogue about that particular project or initiative. And then that would lead up to a second year of where you're actually trying to pass a new zoning bylaw. So, and I believe it's open for different kinds of dialogues, not just natural resource protection zoning, but they're definitely encouraging communities to use it for natural resource zoning, so it's kind of interesting. I, I've been thinking about other communities that I work with and whether, you know, there are some issues that are quite controversial. I don't, in my experience, I don't know that natural resource zoning necessarily is, you know, the open space bylaw Newbury's had for quite a while, I don't know what it was like to pass that originally, but, but it's, you know, it's certainly, I think, worth looking into a little bit and seeing if there is some kind of significant zoning bylaw issue that Newbury might want to consider, then it would be sort of an opportunity to, you know, participate in this facilitated dialogue process. It was interesting.
So, and then at the commissioners' meeting last week, they, the commissioners voted on the assessments for all the member communities for the coming year. The 2.5% increase and voted on the budgets and things like that, and the spotlight last week was on the Thule. They've been doing a spotlight on each of the member communities and the services that, that MVPC is providing for those communities, either by contract or as part of the assessment using local technical assistance and things like that, so. You know, it's been very interesting to see what their relationship is and what they, what they provide to the, to the member communities.
Because they are very different.
They are very different, they are very different.
Considering a town like Newbury versus a city of like the Thule and its needs and things.
Right.
Good, very good.
Martha, I am, there's another, there's an MVPC meeting coming up that I've been invited to, and I will be attending again for work, but I'd be happy to bring Newbury's, you know, they're having a transportation
Right, right, that's right.
Meeting where they're gonna be reviewing priorities that have been developed for Merrimack Valley towns through the Hazard Mitigation Plan, the Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan, and the Great Marsh Coastal Adaptation Plan, what different roads and other transportation areas were identified in that, and then they're asking all the MVPC communities to come, sort of go through the big list and figure out what gets pushed up to the next level. And I don't, I don't know exactly what that means, that, what that, you know, the vetting of all the regional projects and how they get prioritized, but it's essentially getting on a list to be eligible for state funding for transportation projects. So, I was pleased to see that they pulled all the information from their, their Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan and the Great Marsh Plan. So it's like all on there, but there's a lot of stuff, so I don't know
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff.
That next phase of vetting what the priorities are in terms of road improvements.
Right, when's that meeting again? I can't remember.
I think it's Tuesday morning, the 12th, yeah. And on that note, I was sad to hear that Joe Cosgrove is leaving. I don't know if any of you other board members have worked with him, but he's the environmental planner from MVPC. So that position is open, if anyone knows of a good environmental planner.
Right, I think it's open, he's leaving March 15th.
Yeah, he's been great to work with, so.
Yeah, he's been very effective with the stormwater program in particular, you know, trying to, he's consistently pulled in good speakers and, and, you know, Fred Sivian from the state and Newton Tetter from EPA to really help guide us through the whole MS4 general permit stuff. So they are actively looking for someone to fill that position, and if anybody knows a great environmental person.
Very great job.
Eric, anything else on MVPC?
I don't think so.
Do we have anything else to discuss?
I don't think so.
Madam Chairperson, do you have anything else you'd like to discuss?
No, I think I'm good, thank you.
Oh, with that then, I would welcome a motion to adjourn, so, and is there a second?
Second.
Now, with that, we're going to have to do a roll call, since you are re-...
Oh, yeah.
Madam Chairperson, Madam Chairperson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
All right.
Yes, yes.
And Peter says yes. Thank you very much, and you will adjourn this meeting.